The order and start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Keim. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. And we do have one proclamation and one presentation. This is a proclamation in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, November 2020. Whereas like our great nation, the history and culture of our local community and state began with history and culture of the Native American indigenous peoples. And whereas we acknowledge the people of the West have called North Sandio County and Camp Pendleton region home for more than 10,000 years, and today known as the Luceseno people are represented by seven bands, tribes: Pahoyam, Palma, Palma, Pachanga, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Soboto. And whereas the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, the customs and traditions of Native Americans are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas evidence of tribicultural resources found throughout our region proves that the Lucesenos have a long history and rich culture that existed before the first European contact, arrival of the Spanish missionaries, Mexican rule, and the establishment of the United States. Whereas we celebrate our commitments to respect and preserve the rich Native American history and traditions, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Peter Weiss, Mayor of the City of Oceanside, on behalf of the entire city council, continue our commitment to work with the San Luis Rey tribe in the preservation of our shared cultural heritage, do hereby proclaim November 2020 as National American Indian Heritage Month, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And I believe Mel is on.
Yes.
There he is. You're up, Mel.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. And we really appreciate the honor that the Oceanside City has given this Luceseno people, acknowledging our culture. And with my sister Diana and my cousin Roberta Estrada, we'd like to thank you all and just wishing us all well, coming together at this time of transition. And thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I would like to invite Carrie Dale up to give us a presentation on utility of the future.
Thank you very much. I'm here tonight. I am very pleased to inform the community that the Water Utilities Department was selected to be recognized as a utility of the future today by the Water Environment Federation. This is a national recognition. There were 65 utilities in the United States that were presented this. It is in recognition of water and wastewater utilities moving from doing business as usual to becoming innovative, strategic, as well as sustainable. In the water utility, we submitted in a category recognizing water reuse and following council's goal of 50% local water supplies. We've outlined quite a few projects that are currently underway in the utility. To name a couple of them, we have quite a few treatment plants in the city. The Mission Basin Water Reclamation Facility produces local groundwater supplies out of the aquifer. In 2017, it was awarded a Lead Gold Award. We've also had our chief plant operator, Ron Lutke, provide some technical articles to National AWWA Magazine on how membranes can be better preserved over time. We also had an award from the Southwest Membrane Operators Association for this plant. It was Plant of the Year in the medium category for the Southwest Region. In addition to that water treatment plant, we also have the WISI Water Filtration Plant, which in itself provides a majority of the water treatment for the water used here in the city. We also have very talented staff at that facility as well. They've worked really hard alongside our capital improvement folks to optimize that plant and produce the maximum amount of water from that plant, which really saves taxpayers' money. We, our third plant, the San Luis Rey Water Reclamation Facility, which is on North River Road, also has a lot of proud achievements. This past year, it was awarded the Plant of the Year in the medium category for the San Diego California Water Environment Association. It has recently undergone upgrades to provide recycled water to the community, and it is also home to the Pure Water Oceanside Project, which is currently under construction and will be completed by the end of 2021. With that, the utility was also awarded a Water Use California Award for Recycled Water Agency of the Year. So combined, this national award really recognizes those planning efforts, of course, implementing the vision of the council. So congratulations, council and the community, for this achievement. So we have this on display in the lobby, as well as a nice flag recognizing the achievement.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to our consent counter, which are items three through nine, and I've had a request by Councilmember Rodriguez to pull eight and nine. Do we have any public comments on any of the others?
We have public on item number seven.
Well, I guess that leaves three through six.
Move approval for balance.
We have a motion. Second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Go to seven, please.
Item number seven is agreement with Dave Bannon Associates for a rubber play surface at the Harbor Playground, and we have two speakers on this item. Our first speaker is Diane Wolke, to be followed by Austin Wright.
We have Diane ready.
Ms. Wolke, if you can unmute. We'll get back to you. We'll go to Austin Wright.
Unmute.
And whenever you're ready.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You're ready to go.
Okay, this is directed to anyone who took money from North River Farms, as well as to Integral. You can bribe councilmen. You can falsify voter guides. You can misrepresent the issues of a measure. You can spend upward of $20 per Oceanside citizen on false advertising. You can block access to City Hall meetings by busing into Hallmoss and Vista and offering them shirts and pizza, but you still got wrecked at the ballot box. Christopher Rodriguez, you got wrecked. The grassroots organization of Oceanside residents has managed to defeat a coup upon Oceanside City Hall yesterday. I would like to congratulate Esther Sanchez, and thank you to everyone who voted no one else. My time is done.
Thank you. Ms. Wolke, are you there? Getting Ms. Wolke on the line here. Ms. Wolke, you need to unmute yourself. We can't hear you.
Okay, are we good?
You are good, whenever you're ready.
Pour-in-place rubber playground mats are nothing but injuries, hazards, microplastics pollution, and lawsuits waiting to happen. First-degree burn can occur at 118 degrees in 15 minutes, and a full thickness or third-degree burn in 20 minutes. At 124 degrees, a child who steps on one of these mats would have their, the skin on their feet simply melt off. I've provided you pictures showing such injuries, and I've also provided a picture showing a reading at Luceseno Park in June where a pour-in-place playground mat registered to 163 degrees when it was 91 degrees outside and the grass temperature was 83 degrees. There are 255 classified chemicals, or 306 chemicals, 255 of which are considered carcinogenic in these playground mats. You wouldn't let your children play in these chemicals. You wouldn't let them play on crumb tires or even in a tire yard. The ADA, American Disabilities Act does not make playground surface recommendations, and impact attenuation studies have shown that pour-in-place playground surfaces are not superior. I've sent you information showing you the reports on these surfaces, including the GMAX and HIC reports for pour-in-place, for sand, and for mulch. This is also a major issue with microplastics pollution. I fail to understand how the city can commit to plastics waste reduction and continue to contribute in such a monumental way. This is, this is our beaches we're talking about, for heaven's sakes. And wildlife, aquatic life do not recognize when these particles begin to break apart in very short order after being placed, and they will ingest them and ultimately die from these. So you're impacting our environment and even your dinner in a profound way. We now know what is in these playgrounds, and it's time to mitigate, not to contribute further to the pollution issue. Please do not support this item. Thank you.
And that concludes the public on item number seven.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. Thank you. And my comments are also in general for staff. Ms. Wolke is a nurse, and she obviously has a passion for looking into materials for especially playground equipment and recreational areas, and especially with respect to the city's responsibility in ensuring the public health and safety of our, of all residents. Has staff had a chance to meet with Ms. Wolke, to at least have a conversation with her about her concerns, and are there any materials that could be used instead of the ones that we are obviously choosing? I think her comments basically are with respect to the future of Oceanside and having not had this kind of information before. So, you know, those are my comments in general, is, you know, perhaps even encouraging you to meet with her. I think that her intentions are really good intentions, and I don't personally have any information that, about whether or not there are alternatives to, to the materials that we have probably traditionally used. So this is more in, in the spirit of, you know, teaching me and, and also, you know, with respect to what, you know, is there the possibility for being able to have, you know, a higher level of safety for, for our children and our youth and, you know, whoever uses this equipment? Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Weiss, Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmembers Ted Chacon, Harvard Division Manager. I could speak a little bit to this if you'd allow me to.
Thank you.
This is a replacement of an existing surface that has been in the harbor for approximately 20 years without a claim, without an injury, without any indication that it doesn't provide the kind of protection that the surface should provide. It is certified by the International Play Equipment Manufacturers Association, which is industry standard, ADA accessible. The only other product that is ADA accessible is the wood fiber, which is something I believe may possibly the city is using in some, in some off-beach areas. However, at the beach, using a loose fill with the amount of sand and wind blowing, we cannot maintain that. Once the sand gets into the loose fill product, there's no way to re-shift that out of the product. So you end up with, with a surface that is no longer meets the standard of injury protection. So we must have a surface that is one that we can blow the sand off on a regular basis, which this product allows for us, meets all the standards of safety. And as I mentioned, you know, no claims. There's the issue of potential hot surface, and I can only speak anecdotally. I don't have the data. I don't have, you know, the information directly related to that. But I do know that the sand can also get as hot, if not well hotter, than this surface producing, you know, first and second-degree burns. I'm speaking with staff who's there daily. Individuals on a hot day, when the sand is hot, run off the sand onto this surface. So it's not producing the kind of heat that, at least not at the beach environment in that particular scenario. But our option, based on the playground that we have there and the protection you need for the size of the playground we have, this is the product that's available to us. And the reason we're replacing it now is because we don't want to get into the scenario where it is degrading and it is being picked up by animals. At this point, if you were to go out there, you'd see a product that would look usable. But over time, it does lose its density, and so that's the reason, you know, our safety inspector for the harbor has determined we need to replace it at this point in time. We're simply replacing it with the same product.
Thank you.
I'll move approval, staff recommendation. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Councilmember Rodriguez, you asked for item eight.
Correct. I'm agreeing with staff for this annual award. I know we're a part of a group of jurisdictions that pay this amount. I have a quick question. Sorry. Is there anyone that can address this item? Okay. Number eight. The purpose of this network in partnership with Interfaith, one of the main items on here says it's to bridge, it's a bridge housing network that operates at sites located in Carlsbad, Escondido, and Oceanside. Is there currently, did Interfaith or does Interfaith have a plan on opening a shelter in Oceanside or operating a shelter in Oceanside that you're aware of?
Councilmember Rodriguez and Mayor Weiss and City Council, as part of this agreement, there is no inclination that they are going to open a site in Oceanside. That is listed there because we also have another item this evening for our emergency shelter resolution, and any faith-based organization can choose, elect to become part of this network and be a recipient of some of the funds to move forward with those actions. But at this time, there is not a shelter in Oceanside or one planned through Interfaith per se.
That's what I thought. So pretty much the funding is an administrative, to have them oversee administrative outcomes that lead toward shelters and a network of housing and those sort of dynamics, is from what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, that is.
Okay. I'm also seeing a note here. It says, "Due to non-operation of Brother Benno's," there are, there's an available fund, there's available funds, the amount of $10,000. What does, what does that mean when it says, "Due to non-operation of Brother Benno's"?
Councilmember Rodriguez and City Council, I am not certain exactly how those funds were utilized with Brother Benno's, but in the Neighborhood Services budget, there was a line item specific to them, but we haven't been allocating that to Brother Benno's for a couple of years now. And because it's not utilized and there is a higher need at the other shelters that Oceanside homeless do participate in, we decided to make that increase to the network where homeless are being served.
Got it. Very good. I can do the next item, and then we can both at the same time. I want to do that real quick. I'm all for, you know, reducing the requirement or removing the requirement of the CUP for the churches. One thing I think that we can improve is the City of Oceanside putting a simplified letter and kind of a, an announcement together and getting it mailed out to all of our faith-based churches and/or nonprofits that have a location. And so I just would like to have, to see if we can modify supporting this and giving instruction to staff to, to write a letter to our churches and open that door so that maybe we can have some more churches participate. So I make a motion to approve both items eight and nine, but modifying item, excuse me, seven and eight, but modifying eight, giving instruction to staff to send a letter out to churches here in our city inviting them to participate in this program.
Councilmember, Councilmember Rodriguez, item number seven was already voted on.
Sorry, was it eight and nine?
Eight and nine. Yeah, eight and nine.
Eight and nine, modifying number nine, giving instruction to staff to write a letter to churches in Oceanside, inviting them to participate in this program.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. As to item number eight, there has, we, as, as part of the, you know, ongoing conversations about shelters and winter shelters and how difficult it's become to, to, for any of the churches in Oceanside to offer a shelter. For example, do we have any that are going to be offering a shelter, winter shelter this year? It was only one before, and they're unable to do that. Do we have any one that you know of?
Councilmember Sanchez and City Council, at this time, I don't have a specific location that has acknowledged they're wanting to or willing to. Again, if they are, and this is helping them streamline that process, and we can do some work to find out if there are locations willing to.
So basically, last year was the first year that we did not have a winter shelter at all. Bit of Life had traditionally done that for us, was the last faith-based to be able to do that for us. And last year, they were not able to do it. They're not going to be able to do it this year. So at this time, my understanding is we're not going to have any, any churches being able to do it. Hopefully, you know, maybe there will be with this announcement, and I'll support the idea of sending out letters to hopefully get that word out about the waiver of the conditional use permit. But part of that conversation is that per, this, this represents per bed something like $5 to $7 per night, which is, has been like that for, I don't know, feels like centuries. But in other words, it doesn't even begin to pay the costs for offering shelter to one person, $5 to $7 per bed. I would like to see that we review this. We've been asked to review this by Interfaith and others, that this is just not, it's just not, it's not only not reasonable, it's not possible to provide a bed for someone at that low price. So I am going to second the motion for both of these items to go forward, but I'd really like for staff to look into this and, and really try to see how we can make this actually happen, not just words that, you know, City of Oceanside is waiving, you know, certain requirements, but that we actually create a winter shelter in Oceanside. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Mr. Navarro, let's go to 13 items off agenda.
On items off the agenda, we only have one request to speak from Peggy Walker.
And we're getting Ms. Walker lined up.
Yes. Hi, good evening, Mayor Weiss and Council.
Hi. Okay. Let me just count you down in three, two, one, go.
Ready. Okay. I saw that the marijuana business tax proposal passed last night, and with that in mind, I just wanted to come tonight to urge you, as the city goes forward licensing marijuana businesses, to consider a THC potency regulation. This kind of regulation is emerging in local policymaking, thinking in many municipalities. I work in drug use prevention for youth and as a public health educator, and the well-being of kids is my passion. Recently, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services issued a report that said about 700,000 youths aged 12 to 17 had an addiction to marijuana last year. High potency products such as edibles and vaping products, which have THC potency as high as 95%, contribute to that youth addiction. These are the types of products that the applicant declared will be manufactured at the facility recently approved at Ordway. Last week, the American Society of Addiction Medicine called on the State Bureau of Cannabis Control to consider the need to limit potency in the recreational market in light of growing incidences of adverse health events. So I simply wanted to urge you as policymakers to become informed both of the dangers associated with high potency THC and of the movement, perhaps in the state and in the science community, to push for greater THC potency regulation in the interest of public health. Alcohol products are labeled and limited as to alcohol content or potency, and the same discernment should be applied to THC potency in marijuana products. Thank you.
And that concludes the public on off-agenda items.
General Councilmember, comments?
Thank you. I'll take this opportunity to thank my wife of 48 years today for a great life together, and it's a great anniversary that we usually get a good, long walk on a long pier to get a hamburger out at Ruby's, but we won't, won't be able to do it tonight. So just thank her for our life. That's it.
And with that, we will then take a break and adjourn until six o'clock and come back with our two public hearing items. We will reconvene the Oceanside City Council meeting and go to our first six o'clock public hearing item, which is the appeal of a project on 1709 South Pacific Street. And I'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures, please.
Appellant, opponents, staff.
Applicant, staff, and the public. I've met with both the applicant with concerned residents. We've gotten letters from attorneys representing both sides and a number of emails from interested parties in the vicinity.
Emails, public, concerned citizens that live immediately around the area.
Applicant, staff, public.
I'm presuming you presented us with all the various petitions and correspondence and...
Yes, we did. We rescinded that via email, but there is no current petitions on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Maronis, you're up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Veronica Maronis, Planning Consultant, and I'll be presenting Agenda Item 10-2 this evening. Subject site is a beachfront lot located at 1709 South Pacific Street in the South Oceanside Neighborhood Planning Area. The general plan designation is single-family detached residential and a local coastal plan designation of low-density residential. Zoning designation is single-family residential. The project site is located within the appealable area of the coastal zone, and any final action by the city may be appealed to the California Coastal Commission. The project site is currently developed with a 5,574 square foot, two-story-over basement residence. Second story of the existing residence includes a second-story mezzanine. This table outlines the permit history of the project site. The residence was initially constructed in 2004 with the planning division, when the planning division was reviewing the development in this zone against the 92 zoning ordinance. Several subsequent applications between '07 and 2014 were submitted. '07 and 2014 were submitted for various changes to the residence. Excuse me. Including a request for a third story that was eventually withdrawn by the applicant. After the withdrawal of the 2014 third-story application, a new application for an addition remodel and mezzanine was submitted and subsequently approved. In October 2019, code enforcement staff received a complaint for unpermitted construction and opened a case. Subsequently, city staff conducted a site visit and the property owner submitted for the variance and coastal permit requests before you today. The proposed exterior changes requested as part of this permit include the change of the existing flat roof highlighted here to an exterior deck through the addition of glass railing. In the event the variance and regular coastal permit are denied, the railing would be required to be removed. Interior modifications proposed include the infill at the existing second-level mezzanine to create a fully enclosed third story. City staff evaluated the proposed variance and coastal permit requests to determine if the required findings could be met, as outlined in Article 41 of the zoning ordinance and in the local coastal program. Staff concluded the request did not meet all required findings based on the application of city policy documents and recommended denial to the Planning Commission. On August 24th, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution for denial of the application. A timely appeal of the Planning Commission's decision was filed by the applicant. The appellant's letter outlined five issues. Issue number one is shown here. The first portion of issue one contends Planning Commissioners Balma and Busk made comments not pertinent or within the scope of the application. The second portion of issue one asserts the administrative record did not fairly consider evidence and constituted a prejudicial abuse of discretion. The staff report details the general discussion held by both Commissioners Balma and Busk. However, the appellant's letter did not identify which specific comments made by Commissioner Balma were not relevant. Therefore, the general summary of points Commissioner Balma discussed are in the City Council report. Commissioner Busk's comments will be detailed later in this presentation under issue number three. The appellant's letter did not detail how the administrative record failed to consider the evidence. City staff reviewed materials provided and concluded that the required findings could not be supported. Issue two raised by the appellant's letter states Commissioner Balma was unable to follow the applicant's presentation at Planning Commission. An application of COVID-19 protocols, which limit physical presence in the chambers, deprived the applicant of their right to be heard. City staff reviewed the August 24th Planning Commission video, which refutes the claim that Commissioner Balma could not follow the applicant's presentation. Additionally, city hearings are closed to the public in accordance with COVID-19 protocols of proper social distancing and limiting gatherings of 10 people, two 10 people, excuse me. The applicant was able to present and provide follow-up as allotted under the Planning Commission procedures. Issue three claims Commissioner Busk made false, irrelevant, or incorrect statements during the August 24th hearing, which deprived the applicant of a fair hearing and constituted a prejudicial abuse of discretion. However, the appellant's letter does not explicitly identify which comments Commissioner Busk made, which are not relevant, nor do they state how those statements would prevent the applicant from a fair hearing. As noted in the council staff report, Commissioner Busk never explicitly stated he was present at the Planning Commission meeting in 2017, which he was absent from. Commissioner Busk provided background of the prior application for the subject site contextually during his time on the Planning Commission in 2017. Commissioner Busk speculated on the intent of the applicant and the prior application. Issue four contends the Planning Commission's denial disregarded the applicant's vested rights, particularly as they relate to the approved configuration of the western facade which steps back from the coastal string line. However, the appellant's letter did not explicitly state how they acquired a vested right or how the denial impaired said right. The prior project application approved the western facade step-back, including that of only a flat roof area at the second-level mezzanine. Staff reviewed this claim with the city attorney's office and determined the denial does not violate the vested rights doctrine. Issue five asserts the Planning Commission staff report contained matters outside the scope of the application, false or incorrect information, and thus deprived the applicant of a fair hearing. However, the appellant's letter does not identify which aspects of the Planning Commission staff report are false or incorrect. The August 24th Planning Commission hearing was noticed in accordance with applicable requirements, and the applicant was given the allotted time to speak under city procedure, up to 20 minutes, including rebuttal. Therefore, staff recommends the City Council adopt the resolution denying regular coastal permit and variance subject to the listed findings. Additionally, staff received approximately 10 written comments regarding this appeal, all in support of the Planning Commission's decision of denial. That concludes staff's presentation. The appellant has a video they would like to play and presentation materials which have been placed on your dais and they will share. And with that, staff is available for questions.
With that, we'll go to the applicant.
Hi, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Alex Maniscalco, Attorney for the applicant. I understand that staff will be playing a video of four-story properties in the area, and then we'll start a PowerPoint presentation that we've sent separately. Thank you. And I just want to confirm, you can still hear me okay?
Yes.
Thanks. If it's okay, we could, can we start our title slide to our PowerPoint, please?
The PowerPoint has started.
Great, thank you. Again, my name is Alex Maniscalco, Attorney for the applicant, appellant. Appreciate your time today. Our appeal letter at the outset made a broad discussion of our concerns with the fairness of the hearing, but the import is that basically we needed to exhaust our remedies and come before you again and discuss the facts behind our application and the facts relevant to the variance. There was some discussion at that meeting that wasn't relevant about the code enforcement history and about the applicant, and those pieces are not relevant to variance. In fact, there was a dearth of discussion about the actual elements and findings of variance, so little that it raised a concern for us that the facts at the hearing did not support the findings that were made in the resolution as required by the Topanka case. So we're here to run through those facts and we prepared this presentation with it to help. Next slide, please. The first, the first finding in the resolution made an argument that the proposed project was at odds with Policy 6.C.8 of the local coastal program. The city shall ensure that all new development is compatible in height, scale, color, and form with the surrounding neighborhood. The current project, as the resolution acknowledges, is already built to, with, built to the same exterior configuration. The only change is the guardrail. There is no change in the external height, scale, color, and form with the surrounding neighborhood from the previous 2017 staff report. That staff report said, and we've had the highlighted text, that the step-back and the decorative roof overhang providing visible interest and relief meet the guidance as well as step-backs on, the step-backs on each level, and they serve to reduce the apparent bulk of the structure and meet the city's goals. There's no change to the bulk of the structure. Nothing has changed from this 2017 resolution and finding to now. And so our concern is that there are no facts in the record which can justify a finding that this policy has somehow not met now in the local coastal program, when nothing changes with the exterior, except for a clear glass guardrail. Next slide, please. The variance elements, elements of variance are because of special circumstances or conditions applicable to development site. And there's a list, size, shape, topography, location, surroundings. Because of those circumstances or conditions, strict application deprives property of privileges enjoyed by other property. The granting of variance will not be detrimental or injurious to the property improvements in the vicinity. The variance is otherwise consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and not a grant of special privilege. I'll take each of these in order. Next slide, please. Special circumstances. We provided extensive discussion about the Altman matter in 2011, where Ms. Altman gave testimony and made an argument, she didn't actually cite the law on this, there's a Craig case which we've cited here and cited in communication before, but that special circumstances or conditions don't mean physical conditions. They mean anything. There's unique conditions that are, that pertain to Pacific Street, namely that it's a very steep, there's a very steep topography. And so what you might consider a basement to be anything below a street, right, you know, and these homes have apparent two stories from a street. There's no, there's, there's almost, there's both a physical consideration because there's that steep topography, but there are also other practical considerations because of Policy 20-12, 2012-1, and historic applications that show a myriad of properties on Pacific Street that have apparent four stories. And we've, we've shown you the video of that. We'll have a list of them later as well. In addition, there are other non-physical characteristics. Staff has acknowledged the 1992 zoning policies were unfairly applied to the applicants in their original permit. So they were forced to build a home under a different standard. And, and so there was no policy bulletin that would justify or support them to excavate back. And that's one reason why I felt the Altman hearing where Ms. Altman was granted the variance that we're asking for here is specifically appropriate. She had the same circumstances. It was incredibly prohibitive to excavate back to get the benefit of the dual basement policy, that, or dual basement strategy. And so, and so we felt it justified our variance. And the very fact that administrative policy 2012-1 provides for dual basement is admission that such a circumstance, a special circumstance exists here on Pacific Street, the very fact that a special, a special circumstance exists. And in fact, the administrative policy discusses that in the initial paragraphs of the policy, which we can show later. So we've got our citation again of Craig v. County Santa Cruz. There's also an argument that staff makes that somehow because of the scope of the application, because the home is already been built to its full height, that there's no special circumstance. Well, that's almost talking out of both sides of the mouth from our view, because the whole purpose that we're having to go seek a variance is because the top level, the height, which is also interpreted as stories, requires a permit, requires a variance to fill in the open area below the mezzanine. Otherwise, this would be like permits in everybody's neighborhoods like mine, where people just go in and fill in areas below lots. That can't, can't happen here without a variance. So that's why we're here with what is a very small change to a property, 242 square feet. So we would submit that it's unfair. It's almost an admission that the resolution acknowledges that the property meets the height requirement and would be within the height requirement even if the variance were there. Second element, second slide, please. The second, second element of the, of the analysis is that it's not detrimental or injurious. And so we, and so staff provides an analysis, and in the resolution, they said there was only a single home that received a variance since 1990. We provided counteranalysis, actually annotated their attachment at the Planning Commission hearing, and there's no discussion or question of that. There's no discussion or question about all the homes that we showed that appear to be four stories. And in fact, staff's report attempts to disqualify, I guess, five out of six of the variances because they were prior to 1990, without really an explanation for why 1990 applies. And also excludes, and there's a total of 18 properties, it excludes properties that didn't receive a variance, whether because of oversight or because of Policy 2012-1, which we would say is unadopted. And as I'll come to later, I'm not sure that's a fair distinction. A list of the four-story homes is here. We don't think it's detrimental or injurious, and we believe that 53 of our neighbors don't think this either, don't think it's detrimental or injurious. They provided testimony and support. And for the apparent exterior of our home, of Dan and Candace's home to not change, we would argue it's basically the same policy behind administrative policy 2012-1, which allows an exemption. There's really no discussion of how wholly internal changes, like the fill-in of a floor that's compliant with code, would be injurious or detrimental when the other, otherwise meet health and safety requirements. And in fact, the fact that the addition of a guardrail makes it safer to clean the glass on the upstairs level. Next slide, please. The privileges others enjoy. And this is the first sheet of three sheets of a spreadsheet that was referred to as Attachment A in the, in the Planning Commission resolution. And on the right are the annotations that we provided at that time. And as you'll see, staff is listing a number of four-story homes. There are arguments in here that somehow these homes are not four-story homes because they're over a two-story basement. In other words, they're applying Policy 2012-1. Again, not an adopted policy, not an amendment to the zoning code, but administrative policy 2012-1. And, or they are trying to exclude properties that were constructed prior or that received variances prior. And in fact, the property at 1815, which we'll come to on the next page, if we can go to the next slide, please, you'll see they actually received a variance for a third story. And they received a permit to do modifications, and they were not required, and the modifications would, you know, arguably increase the degree of nonconformity, and they were not required to receive a variance. And in particular for a deck, and we've submitted a letter into the record as well about this. And so, and in fact, in some plans, it appears that the area was labeled as a third, as a third-story deck. And so it seems that there's a false distinction here, or that they're trying to create a false distinction that somehow Dan and Candace are getting a privilege that would be getting a privilege, would either not be getting, we get a privilege that others do not enjoy, or, or we would be getting something special, but that's not the case. There's a long history of permits. And again, the, the opening section of Administrative Policy 2012 discusses that. If we can go to the last slide, please. And you'll see, you will see again, a list of all these properties that are parent four-story homes, and we have noted all of them. We never received any discussion or follow-up, no discussion of the homes that were shown or the video that we provided. And so we were concerned that the factual evidence directly contradicts this claim of a single, a single property that's received a variance. We think that's a false distinction. Can we go to the next slide, please? Pierce is at the bottom of the slides, 1825. Pierce, maybe you have one extra slide there? Yeah. So again, the comments on the right side are comments the applicant provided. Okay. Okay. The fire, the final element, otherwise consistent, not a special privilege. As I've said, similar to the, to the privilege that others are enjoying, staff's resolution limits its analysis. Doesn't, doesn't give a justification for why it's limiting them since 1990. Now, to be fair, staff disclosed in their presentation that six out of 18 of the properties evaluated on Pacific Street received variances to exceed height. It doesn't explain that, did not explain the arbitrary, the arbitrary distinction. It doesn't discuss about 2012-1 and whether that's a fair distinction to exclude those properties from the analysis of whether other people are getting the same benefit. Again, no external change is being requested except for a guardrail, identical to what was approved on 1815, just weeks ago. We've provided correspondence in, in plans and substantiated this. We've provided a list of apparent four-story homes. And again, we provided the Altman variance and the full administrative record there, including the transcript, where you can hear discussion and where we cited in our correspondence that the city attorney's office said that they could prepare findings if the city council so, so wished that supported the issuance of the variance. And they put the issue to the client despite respect, they recommended against it, the Altman application as well, just like they're recommending against ours. So we think that that's, we ask for the benefit of your substantive consideration of these items and particularly that discussion and the acknowledgement. And we've also quoted and given images specifically of the language that the audience received in their, in their resolution. Next slide, please. So administrative policy 2012-1, just to touch on this briefly. You know, the one, the one explanation, policy 2012-1 seems to be a good faith attempt to explain that there's a conflict in law and that if implied, it would potentially restrict applications, would require a lot more people to get variances effectively. That's the way I read it. But it's a policy statement as we understand. We understand it was not adopted, was not circulated and adopted as amendment to the zoning ordinance. It was not circulated as amendment to the local coastal program in 1986, the implementation measures. You know, the zoning ordinance which applies to the coastal zone would be subject to the local coastal program. So it wasn't vetted through any of those elements. It seemed to be a way to expedite that. The fact that it isn't, it's being used here to exclude our clients from this when there's a bunch of apparent four-story homes, all in the same, that have the same topographical issue, based on a conflict and distinction, it doesn't seem fair to exclude those homes from our analysis of what our clients are being deprived. Next slide, please. This is just, this is just a little bit more discussion from the administrative policy. And in particular, in the past, it was not uncommon for residential development on sloping beachfront lots to be approved with two levels of daylighted basement, i.e. two levels partially buried in the slope but fully exposed above the adjacent grade at one end. And then they say that planning started applying NIBC code to try to limit the height and that it preclude new development from achieving a similar number. So they talk about the fact that there's been this change, but there was no legislative adoption, there was no amendment to the zoning code. There's no modification to the building code as adopted by the city of Oceanside. Those things were left unchanged. And the next slide actually has a little chart that just shows the, the distinction in the, in the 1986 ordinance. So, so in conclusion, we're bringing this appeal because we feel that the facts were not fairly considered the planning commission. And we communicated all of them to the planning commission and they weren't, they were, were not discussed in the record substantively. Most of the discussion hinged on things which were outside the variance and which we think were prejudicial. Staffs actually identified the items, I know they say that we didn't specifically identify, but they identified the allegations by Commissioner Baske. They specifically identified our concern about what, and responded to our concern about Commissioner Balma. But the fact remains, item 1A, 1B, that the factual record of that hearing does not support the findings against, proposing for denial. And I'm happy to yield my time and preserve it for a lot of questions. Thank you.
And you have approximately two and a half minutes left. Mr. Navarro, we have public. On item number 10, we have seven requests to speak. And our first request to speak is from Marco Gonzalez to be followed by Joel West, to be followed by Terry Pagel. We are getting Mr. Gonzalez up.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity, Honorable Mayor and Council. Marco Gonzalez with Coast Law Group. I represent a number of folks living in the vicinity of the applicant. And I find it interesting that at the outset, the applicant wants the city to ignore the history of this project. They don't want any discussion of the code enforcement action. They don't want to essentially have to account for any of their own actions or any of the past permitting actions that really inform why we're here today. I'm going to go back to 2017, the planning commission hearing. If you look at the staff report, there's an interesting paragraph there that talks about the deck in particular. That paragraph reads, "When originally submitted in October 2016, the project included a second level with a different interior configuration and a mezzanine that included a total of 592 square feet and a 192 square foot deck." Now here's the important part, it states, "Staff indicated that the outdoor deck and hallway leading to the deck did not meet the definition of a mezzanine and that the exterior deck gave the appearance of an additional story and contributed to the building's bulk and scale." What is this telling us? This is telling us that in 2016, they sought exactly what they're seeking now. But instead, when staff pushed back on them and said, no, when you put a guardrail on a, on a otherwise roof and you turn it into a deck, it has a negative impact on the building's bulk and scale. It makes it appear as though you have a fourth story when you're only allowed to have a three-story. And, you know, they said, okay, we're going to come back and we're going to submit plans that only ask for a true mezzanine that comply with the rules. But then after constructing that exterior, they're now coming before the city and saying, well, there's no harm, no foul. Now we get to go back and do what you told us previously would be bad because you can't tell me that it's bad today. And I'm sorry, but if they had a claim that adding a guardrail to an exterior deck did not contribute to the building's bulk and scale, 2016 and 2017 would have been the time to bring it up. They essentially waived that right when they took advantage of the city's approval to build out the exterior of their structure compliant with the three, with the two-story limit. And now they're simply trying to pretend that they never acquiesced to the bulk mass and scale impacts of an exterior deck. Now I find particularly egregious that the applicant continues to claim that they had approval to insert a sliding window, if you will, and frankly, the, the applicant's attorney's claim that installing a guardrail, you know, doubles as safety for cleaning the window. I'm sorry, but this is all specious. When you get caught with your hand in the cookie jar, when you get caught trying to build out something that you've already been told is not allowed per code, you don't get to pretend that that never happened. And I think that at the planning commission where they dove into this project multiple times in the past, that did have an impact on their willingness to exercise discretion to find the, to find, to make the findings for the variance. And I think that the record is replete with findings to suggest that the application of any sort of an exterior deck would in fact increase the bulk and scale and the perception of a, of a fourth floor on this property. So that being said, I think that the, the applicant is grasping and I think that the planning commission did the right thing. And I would simply ask that you take into account the multiple submittals that, that were given to you by some of the folks that are going to be speaking today in that you support the staff recommendation and the planning commission and that you did not do.
Your time's up, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joel West, to be followed by Terry Pagel, to be followed by Tig Haller. And I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. So we're getting.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Mr. West, you're ready to go.
Mayor Weiss, Deputy Mayor Jack Feller, and members of the city council. Like other cities, Oceanside has building and zoning standards for a reason. As the staff report makes clear, this proposed project does not meet those city standards. I believe all of you have been in the neighborhood. The property is already the largest beachfront, single-family home in South Oceanside and perhaps the whole city, larger even than the 10-bedroom short-term rentals in our neighborhood. At almost 5,600 square feet, it's already 770 square feet larger than the house that the council rejected in 2016. As built, the design was pushed west, east, and upward to the maximum possible envelope and is already inconsistent with the neighborhood character. As the staff notes, for the past year, the house has included a third-story deck and railing that are not part of the plans approved by council in 2017 and coastal in 2018. The use of the top story as a deck and for future entertaining means the structure no longer steps back to the western facade as promised in the approved plans. Such stepping back reduces the scale of the house as required by city policy, as found throughout our neighborhood and as nicely demonstrated by the applicant's own drone footage. The applicant is also asking that you waive the two-story limit imposed by section 1709 of the city's 1986 zoning ordinance. With one exception, for a property 10 feet shorter and 2,000 feet, square feet smaller, this requirement has been followed by all other applicants in the past 30 years. Those of us who've invested our life savings to live in this neighborhood ask that you reject a precedent that will incentivize buildings three stories above the street throughout our neighborhood. We request that you instead preserve the existing zoning rules by denying the coastal permit and variance. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Terry Pagel, to be followed by Taj Haller, to be followed by Whitney Stenstrud, to be followed by Thor Stenstrud. Stenstrud, I apologize for mispronouncing your name. So do we have Terry, Terry Pagel?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you unmuted us? Okay.
All right, perfect. All right, whenever you're ready.
So my name is Terrence Pagel. I live about eight houses north of the applicant's current house. You've heard an awful lot of this going back and forth, and my big thing here is, did the applicant start building out the structures that the variances asked for before filing the variance? And I absolutely say, yes, they did. So my question is, why have any of this process with the planning commissions, the city council, staff and someone like that? If, after you've built your house, you get your inspection, your final inspection, and then you go ahead and build what you asked for in the first place and that you signed off on the reduced structure in the first place? So he signed off on it and then he went out and started building it, rebuilding the, the section. And then when he gets caught, he comes out and says, oh, and they file a variance and tears down a little bit of his structures that he's put up, I guess illegally. And I, I would think that at, at some point, somebody would look at this and say, this is not fair. It's not just fair to the neighborhood, it's not fair to the whole city and certainly not the mayor, the city council, nor planning commission. You all spent your time and the city's money to negotiate an outcome and all went to waste because he ignored his written word and his verbal agreement and just build it. And the appellant's counsel is trying to convince this counsel that this is a misunderstanding or the appellant did nothing deliberately wrong or whatever all the sweet words mean. But that's all it really is, is they're pretty sweet words trying to cover up what was done illegally. Do something about this. I mean, it, that, that's really what I'm, I'm trying to say, is do something about this. Stop this process. Otherwise, every one of us that live along the beach there could just file plans, take whatever negotiations take place, accept them, and then just go out and finish building what you planned to or in the first place. That's what he did.
Mr. Pagel, your time is up. Our next speaker is, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing this, Taj Haller or Tig Haller?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you, yes. Tyde Kaler.
You're ready to go.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Tyde Kaler at 1637 South Pacific Street. I'm a few doors north of the subject property. And just have a quick comment, just to remind council and the mayor that there are no findings for hardship. I think the staff report and the planning commission made it very clear that there are no findings of hardship to support a variance for a long-held standard of three store, of two stories over basement. Nobody gets the third story over basement. And the applicant is trying to conflate themselves with the 2011 Altman variance, which is very particular, was a small addition, single-car garage, house built in the 1970s. There is no comparison, especially since the applicant has maximized the total possible square footage on a single lot under both the 1992 and 1986 zoning ordinances. After the applicant filed for a 2014 variance for three stories over, over basement and was told by planning that they would be denied, the applicant withdrew their variance submission. So here we are, right after the 1,500-square-foot addition was finalized, within two or three weeks, the applicant just built it anyway and built a deck and built the addition. So it's really disingenuous of the applicant's counsel to suggest that there's a long history of three stories over basement because there's not. Planner Hiddelman in the 2011 Altman variance stated they were all from the 1980s and were granted by air or oversight. None of them should have been granted. Planning has been, has been absolutely consistent on, on the two-story over basement rule. So, and, and finally, I just want to say that there's a contemptuous nature to all of this. It's somewhat of a mockery or a ridicule of our process. I don't understand the obsession for size. I, I don't get it. There's no added value. It's a zero-sum game. The neighbor builds out big, you know, everyone builds out big, you just get a bunch of big ugly buildings. So please enforce our laws. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Whitney Stenstrud, to be followed by Thor Stenstrud, to be followed by Dan Schmidt.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Whenever you're ready.
Can you clarify, is it two or three minutes that we're speaking?
Three minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you. First, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I'm assuming that's acceptable.
We are unable to accept screen shares on our end. Per IT, we can't accept screen shares.
Well, that is unfortunate. Can I ask if the council received my printed-out package of images today?
They have. Council has received that package.
Okay. Well, we'll have to go without images for the rest of the people, but, oh, I can, yeah, I don't have them. I can't, I can't do it. So anyway, if the council could just have them at the ready, I would be happy to talk about them and I will start now. Good morning or good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Whitney Stenstrud, 1705 South Pacific Street. First, I want to say I commend the thorough investigation of the planning staff and I support the planning commission's decision to deny this variance. I've heard multiple mentions, we all have, of the appellant's and their lawyer, that this shouldn't be a big deal, that they're not changing the outside of the structure at all and it's just a little internal rejiggering of space. Well, it is a big deal because it was only at the end of a long, drawn-out negotiation with the planning commission that they were even granted this towering mezzanine. And the addition of the large deck absolutely changes the profile of the building. I went to the effort to help everyone visualize exactly how a large, illegal, fourth-floor deck that is 312 square feet of additional outdoor living space is not at all like an empty roof that is supposed to be there. If you could flip through the documents, you'll see the drastic difference between, you know, they've gone to great lengths to not have anything on the deck. I'll add that the deck's been sitting there for over a year illegally because it's just a glass railing and they're using it to clean the windows. Well, it's a massive deck and they could have just put a glass right on the window if they needed some support. It's going to be turned into a deck and you can see by my pictures, I've shown you five different angles. From the beach, you can see, A, the bulk of the building, you can see how drastically it's changed when they actually populate a deck and how you have no step back whatsoever when you have that railing at the front. I show it to you from the beach, from the south, directly next to it, and across the street from behind, how it inflinges on the, on. street from behind, how it inflinges on the, on the view to the water. You know, when a criminal breaks into a store and steals all the merchandise and then gets caught days later, do we let him go on his merry way and keep all the stuff because he successfully ran away with it all? No, we restore order, and the criminal pays the appropriate penalties for his actions. I would argue it's even more important to ensure that the rules, regulations, and codes in this matter are enforced and respected, because the integrity of the beachfront community relies on it. The nature of that community has been closely guarded and regulated for a reason. So any flexing opens the doors to reckless development and demolishes the character of the waterfront forever. So please, do not let such a dangerous precedent be set that rewards greed, lawlessness, and deceit, and please vote to deny the variance. Thank you.
Our next speaker on this item is Thor Stenstrud, to be followed by Dan Schmidt. And we are getting Thor lined up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, whenever you're ready.
I've heard a video, can you see me?
Yes, I can.
Well, unfortunately, that's your disadvantage. But anyway, dear Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Thor Stenstrud, 1705 South Pacific. And on behalf of the other members of Association of Concerned Beachfront Homeowners of South Pacific, I might add, a number of them are making presentations tonight. I'm making these comments regarding the subject appeal to emphasize that there are two distinct issues at play here. Firstly, the variance request doesn't meet any of the four requirements, and we strongly support planning staff and planning commission recommending to deny. Secondly, the application for a variance shouldn't have been accepted. Why? Because the applicants were in a violation of the coastal permit that the city ordered to be corrected in a timely manner. Didn't follow up, and after a year, has yet to be corrected. We find it hard to believe that in any other city, the applicant's devious actions would have been tolerated. On October 15, 2019, the well-documented substantial code enforcement, including a glass railing on top, and enclosing of the mezzanine, and unpermitted flooring, thereby creating an illegal fourth floor, were fine. By the way, the council for the applicant should learn the difference between a level and a story. Planning staff would probably help him. Lost my place. And I said, why? Because the applicant, okay. On October 19, the well-documented substantial code valuations, including the glass, were formed. On October 22, the city responded. Mr. David Gans' chief building official wrote, "The glass railing on the mezzanine level was not part of the approved plans, and our code enforcement division will be requiring the railing and supporting brackets removed in a timely fashion against where one year." In an email dated June 22, city officials, our legal counsel, said it the best. Rather than comply with the directive of code enforcement in response to their flagrant violations, within two weeks, the applicants lawyered up and filed for a vengeance. Not until 40 days after being made aware of the violences, the code enforcement finally found time to inspect the illegal construction. By that time, the applicants had removed unpermitted flooring, but had done nothing to comply with the earlier order-
Mr. Stenstrud, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. I figured-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dan Schmidt. And we're getting Dan on the line right now.
All right, everybody hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. I am Dan Schmidt, 1705 South Pacific. Good evening, mayor and city council. First of all, I commend the thorough, concise report by the planning staff and concur in upholding the planning commission's resolution to deny the variance and regular coastal permit. I've heard a lot of lies and weak excuses around this appeal. And also, may I ask, has the city council received my packet with, there's three images attached behind some talking points? If you could turn to page-
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. If you could turn to page one, that'd be great. I've heard a lot of lies and weak excuses around this appeal, but I can address one thing with certainty. As a mechanical engineer of 14 years, when they say, when their attorney says, no work has been done before the application for the variance, I invite you to see what I saw less than two weeks after the final inspection of their massive addition. Cue picture one. As you, here you see joist hangers on exposed structure, no drywall, in a line spanned the width of the house, what looks to be 12 feet above the floor. Plummed stub outs and electrical boxes floating halfway up a high wall accessible to no one. Structural joists cut to size and cued on the illegal deck. All of this was readily visible from the beach. It was clearly obvious to me what they were up to. They were filling in the open space of the mezzanine, making it a full third story above a basement, and completing access to the large roof, which conveniently already had illegal railings installed. This is all eerily similar to what they had previously been denied. In picture two, this photo was taken a few weeks later. The view at the bottom is showing the illegal work for context, as a cross-section view. We saw the joists go in, the subfloor was installed. The construction activity was witnessed on the illegal deck. Let me point out the top there, the open sliding glass door, which by design was floating up on a wall, which could only be accessed if one filled in the open area of the mezzanine. How else would they have carried a table saw out there, or saw, that we witnessed while they were doing the construction? In picture three, taken 48 days after the inspector finally got inside the site, showed magically open again, even after the, even, but as even the staff report itself says, "It appeared the floor joists were placed and then removed in that open space area," end quote. That's exactly what happened, and was plenty of time, 48 days. I ask of you, please don't reward this behavior of not only premeditated construction without plans or permits, but after the fact illicit construction, the two most contested aspects of the 2017 addition, that were previously repeatedly and specifically denied as permissible. Please don't buy the lies and deception and deny the variance. The only special circumstance is that they felt they could get away with this without following the letter of the law. Thank you for your time, Dan.
And that concludes the public comment on the public hearing item.
I believe the applicant's representative still has a little bit of time for rebuttal.
Two minutes and 30 seconds.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. I'll just run down, run briefly through some of the comments. Mr. Gonzalez's comments noting the prior permit history, it does not comport with the law. Each application is taken on its own, and he fails to acknowledge that the prior permit, which was grant, which was granted in 2017, was a ministerial permit, not discretionary. So we couldn't ask for certain things. They fail to acknowledge the permit that was denied previous to that was separated and violated the, or touched the string line. That was the primary reason for the denial. It did not have a step back. The new proposed plans step back five, 10, and 15 feet from the string line. There were substantial changes made in response to that denial. So, so I think it's a false comparison. But again, it's really, this should not be considered as relevant to the discussion of the variance, because this application should be considered on its own, related to what the delta is, what's being changed. We've said before, city staff was advised the intention of application, of the applicant to apply prior to final inspection. We provided correspondence by Mr. Gans that acknowledged this. Staff did not tell us that we could build without permits, or that, that there was effectively a right. But the applicant made clear that they intended to come back and seek a permit, and they did just that. So again, these are red herrings, they are separate from the elements of the variance, and we're concerned that this sidetracks the hearing. As far as hardship, we've shown that there's 18 other properties, whether granted by air or oversight, that does not affect the validity of those permits. And their benefit, the hearsay statements from the, from that previous record, is not relevant if no appeal or subsequent red amendment was filed on those individual applications within 90 days. So their fact is that they are vested, and people can rely on that. Obviously, there's a lot of ad hominem attacks. There is a small contingent of unhappy neighbors, in contrast to the 53 in support. There are some statements that there's illegal activity that test the limits of free speech. We don't see the need to distract council from the facts of the variance. Our clients have maintained at all times that they respect the law, and they will follow the law. The conjecture about the delay or the intentions, they just wanted to have council present, and they consented. That was me. And it was, it was Thanksgiving, so it was hard to get back in time. But we did, and we scheduled, and we consented the search. We didn't make the city go and get a warrant to come inspect. We consented. And the guardrail is out there. We wanted to bring it, bring it open for discussion. It shows people what we were considering constructing. It's at risk. It would have to be taken down if the permit is not granted. So the idea that there is some sort of flagrant or ill-intent or specious arguments here, that's not the case. We got a ministerial permit. Now we're coming back for a discretionary modification, and open, open to have a discussion that's focused on these issues. The allegation that the approved architectural features, a deck, is false. Building has been built to code. Code enforcement has inspected the home. Building division has inspected the home. There's no violation of a coastal permit. There is a separate allegation of unpermitted construction, and we are trying to resolve that here in this variance request. The actions are not devious. This is a 242-square-foot interior filler-
Repital time.
And the use of our architectural feature as a deck. It's not devious.
Can you wrap it up, please? You're out of time.
Yep. And there's no prior, no precedent set. Prior permits stand for themselves. The permit history of the other homes is there. Each variance is assessed based on the history. And the fact that some of those homes-
Please wrap it up, you're a little out of time now.
Is not precedent. Thank you for your-
With that, we will close the public hearing portion and come back to council. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. And let me say that I have had a chance to review all of the materials and listen to the concerns of the community and, by the way, did staff want to respond in any way prior to my, starting my comments?
Yes, if staff could just-
Yes, thank you.
Make a couple of comments. Thank you, Honorable Councilmember Sanchez. With regard to the statement that the applicant received ministerial approval, the last entitlement that allowed for the second-level mezzanine was discretionary, and did go before the planning commission, as far as that is concerned. And then one last comment regarding the applicant's presentation about staff's intent as to why we chose a 1990 date that was merely to depict the consistency of staff's recommendations before the decision-making bodies, that there was a clearly a discernible date where prior variances were approved, and subsequent to that, only one had been approved.
Um, mayor and council members, I'm Jeff Hunt, city planner, and I'd like to offer some comments as well. Your zoning ordinance, right now, requires a maximum height of 35 feet or two stories, whichever is less. That's what your zoning ordinance required. I believe that was based on public input from the citizens and town site in South Hill. Planning staff has consistently administered this zoning ordinance over the last several years. The applicant argues that due to long-ago decisions, some of them based on floors and perceived stories, and one variance since 1990, that the city should grant them a variance. I would ask, what do we tell the people that we have told over the last several years that they cannot do that because your zoning ordinance does not allow that? What do we tell them now? What do we tell the future people who come to our door tomorrow and say, I want to, I want the same thing? What do we tell the applicant who was denied a variance recently? Veronica can give you the date on that one, she knows it better than I. If the city council does not like this code provision, and that's, that's fine, we accept your direction, then tell staff to go and change that code. Don't start granting a series of variances or picking and choosing variances. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate those comments, because basically, we all rely on a set of rules, and we all agree to abide by those rules. I am very concerned that there were activities and actions that were in direct, in direct violation of those rules in not seeking a permit. The stepping back was to reduce the sense of bulk and scale. It was very specifically not meant to be a separate living space, the mezzanine, what we call the mezzanine. And to have, and it was specifically not allowed to have a guardrail, so that it would not look like another story. I mean, to have been told directly, no, you are not allowed to have another living space, another story, and then come back, you know, be allowed a mezzanine, and then to convert it, is just flies, you know, just, it's just not, you know, acceptable behavior. So while I understand the desire to maximize space, especially in a precious place like the beach, we have a responsibility to all the residents to apply the law equally to each and every person. I agree, if we're going to change the laws, then we should do it in a very, very public way, in a very, very public process. They are all now about the same height in bulk and scale, and this individual, I feel, is trying to go beyond that. So my motion would be to agree with the actions of the planning commission and move to adopt the resolution. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Mr. Hunt, can you please step up to the mic? I have some questions for you specifically. If an applicant applies for a permit on the coast and planning staff denies it, what, what remedies do they have each and every single applicant?
There's staff decisions that are appealable to the planning commission, and planning commission decisions are appealable to the city council within the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone, which this happens to be. They can then be appealed to the coastal commission.
So let's talk about that one fluke, so to speak, the Altman property, which was an over 3,000-square-foot house, a smaller lot. They applied. Staff made the recommendation to deny. That's been consistent on both of these situations. And a planning commission, who is not a legislative body, they are an advisory commission appointed by this body, made a decision to approve it and say, hey, Altman, we like it, we hear your story, we don't hear a lot of complaints, we're going to make a recommendation against staff's recommendation, against the coastal and the ordinances and the laws, and came before council, the legislative body, and we make a decision on it. That's our job. We make legislative decisions. And so I think there are some variables, and there's some complexities here and along the coast, that where gray area lies, I think it's our job as a legislative body, case by case, for those who would like to appeal, that's their administrative process up to legislative body. The individual you referenced that you just denied, did they or did they not have the right and the opportunity to appeal that denial?
I would believe they would have the right to appeal it, yes.
Absolutely. And to your knowledge, have they?
I don't know the details of that one. I would defer to my staff, Veronica, she can speak to that better than I can.
But they, from my understanding, your understanding, they had that right? Just like this application has the right?
It'd be hard to imagine a situation where they wouldn't have an appeal.
Okay. So with that being said, I, you know, I just want to point out that, you know, we're, we are the elected legislative body, and as that, give the power by the people. We have the right to review and multiple variables and make policy decisions. With respect to the code enforcement cases, when an individual has a code enforcement case, and then they're required to apply for a permit, is there additional fees that they have to pay on top of the normal permitting fees as a consequence, so to speak, because the case was brought forth because of a code enforcement claim?
Mayor and council members, for planning, there is not a fee. I'm not familiar with a building. I'm not familiar with a building fees. There may be with building, I'm not sure. And maybe Kurt knows.
Somebody can, if somebody can answer that question from staff? Is there additional cost because it began as a code enforcement claim?
There are additional fees that can be charged at the discretion of the building official. They're called investigative fees and roughly double the inspection fee.
Were those fees charged on this applicant?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know that the status of the building permit, that would be the Building Division. I can only represent.
Is the applicant, can the applicant answer that question? Are they on the line?
They're still lying. We'll go ahead and pull them up.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
There was no code, there was actually no inspection. The building permit was finalled, and the code enforcement complaint came after that building permit. And we were, we made our intention very clear that we were applying right away. So there was never a cause for an additional inspection beyond the consented search where I was present.
Okay, thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you. I have no further questions. I want to hear what my other colleagues have to say.
Mr. Mullin?
I'd clarify one point, and in response to Councilmember Rodriguez's statement that you're a legislative body, of course you are the legislative body that's elected by the people. In this capacity, as you understand, you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. So you're applying the existing zoning standards to the facts before you, based upon the entire administrative record that's been assembled. So you're not acting today in a legislative capacity, you're acting in a judicial or quasi-judicial capacity. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt, I have a couple of questions for you or your staff. The current zoning ordinance provides for two stories over a basement.
35 feet or two stories.
Or two stories over basement, period. With the other properties that were identified on that one chart, and they all showed four stories, how many of them are actually two stories over a basement versus three stories over a basement?
I'll defer to Veronica, who's done.
Okay, well, while she's pulling that up, was, is there a difference between the 86 zoning ordinance and the current one in regards to number of stories or height?
The 86 ordinance requires 35 feet or two stories, whichever is less. There's no reference to a basement. The basement is figured in in that calculation. So it's 35 feet or two stories, whichever is less. The 92 ordinance did not have that provision of the two stories or less. And not to get off track, but we don't have an 86 or a 92 anymore. We just simply have the city zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Honorable council members, with regard to how many properties on that list are two stories over basement, they identified that all of the properties they listed had quote-unquote "four levels," not to be confused with four stories as defined by the zoning ordinance. And so this slide shows that of those 18 properties, less two, which are not in the zoning, same zoning designation, which are noted on the annotated version of that spreadsheet, about 12 of them were permitted in some capacity, two stories over basement.
So the final one, the one variance approved in 2011, that is actually four, three stories over a basement?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sanchez.
No, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the comments by Councilmember Rodriguez. We're not here to argue the process. There is a process. But, you know, I was going to add that we're here to apply the laws to the facts and render a decision. That's all I wanted to say.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Which was done once before on the Altman property. According, you know, it was done before on the Altman property, once before. It's been done before on the Altman property, the same situation.
Honorable Councilmember Rodriguez, yes, that is the one variance that was granted.
Thank you.
I'm going to second Councilmember Sanchez's motion. Seeing no other lights, please vote.
Let's ask one, a couple.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
The, there was ones, I can't seem to locate it in my mountain of paperwork here, but it, there was two basements. Is that correct?
Councilmember Feller, Deputy Mayor Feller, there are properties that have been approved two stories over two basements. That is correct.
And each one of those basements has a, it makes it a four-story?
It makes it a four-level home. The zoning ordinance defines story and defines basement. And so in those instances, two of those four levels meet the definition of basement.
How does this 2012-1 that attorney was talking about, give me a little feel for what that is telling us?
That policy, administrative policy, provides direction to staff on the interpretation of applying stories over basements. So the 2012-1 policy describes that if there was no interpretation, the 35 feet or two stories, would, the two stories would be the limiting factor, and properties most likely would not be able to build to 35 feet. So staff applies the basement definition. If it can be proven substantiated, as the basement definition does give a quantifiable way to discern the basement, then it allows for the two stories over basement levels.
So how could this possibly work without a variance?
What is proposed by the applicant under this application explicitly meets a third story, as definition goes. So I believe in 2016, the prior approval, the compromise was the mezzanine level.
Okay. All right, thanks.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Motion approved, 5-0. And with that, we will go to our final public hearing item, which is adoption to amend the Transnet Local Street Improvement Program. And we will open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Just staff.
Just staff. Staff only.
Staff.
Mr. Toshack, you have 45 seconds.
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, David Toshack, Municipal Civil Engineer, Altman Service Department, for use item number 11 on the agenda. It's an adoption of a resolution to amend Oceanside's Transit Program of Projects in the Sandag 2020 RTIP. So by definition, I'm going to walk him through how we correlate and work with Sandag in the project. So Sandag is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO, for the San Diego region, a cooperative, comprehensive, basically performance-based multimodal transportation planning group. From that planning effort, they develop a regional transportation plan for basically safe and effective surface transportation systems for people and freight. Sandag's current RTP is known as San Diego Forward. With the plan developed, then we go into the RTIP, or RTIP, it's commonly referred to, is the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, that identifies projects for use of federal, state, and transnet funds. Transnet is a half-cent sales tax for local projects. Federal and state funds are available through competitive grants. We have an example of that with ATP grant for the Coastal Rail Trail in Michigan Morris. The kind of way we interact with each other is, again, the tip, or the RTP, is the Sandag Plan. It is long-term, out to 2050, basically sets policies on those funds and how to spend those funds. Again, the RTIP, the program versus the plan, the program is a short-term process, five years, similar to our five-year program, that's project-specific. So City of Oceanside and the various agencies, all the agencies in our region, come up with a program of projects. We understand our funding, and we have anticipated revenues coming into. From those projects and those anticipated revenues, we then develop our own transnet program within our CIP budget that we present to council on an annual basis. So why I'm in the RTP? Well, it's simply a change in course, a mid-course correction. Bookkeeping is, things change. So similar changes, maybe a change in the scope of a project, timing of the reimbursement and amount of reimbursement. In this case, we're discussing and presenting a change in not only timing, but also the amount of reimbursements. Transnet was programmed about just over $9 million for the Sea of Oceanside in fiscal years 2021 and 2022, or 2122. The change came about from Sandag. We just basically didn't get the full carry forward. We had a reduction of $487,000 from the estimated $2,993,000 down to the actual $2,446,000. Now, that's kind of good news and a little bit of bad news. The good news is we actually got more work done than was anticipated, and that we're excited about that. A little bit of the bad news is that Sandag's not meeting the revenue projections from their tax revenue. So the resolution proposes decreases for funding in our street overlay program by $380,000, and then the road safety and improvements by $107,000. When staff looked at our options in Transnet, we kind of realized that SB1 and Measure X on this, on those programs, there's sufficient funds to kind of make up some of the shortfalls in there, so we could still put out successful projects with those deductions and decreases from those projects. Some of our smaller projects are in the Sandag program and our tip. If we took money away from those, then we're risking possible holdup or maybe termination of project due to lack of funding. So with that, we're going to, the recommendation is to adopt the resolution requesting Sandag to amend the City of Oceanside's portion of the Transnet Program of Projects in the 2020 Regional Transportation Improvement Program. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Navarro, we have any public?
No public.
I'll close the public input portion. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm saddened by the, you know, by the reductions, but at least we're going to, it's not going to impact our projects, because we do have a way of substituting funds there. So move adoption. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. Your, the SB1 funds are, I mean, all of that's going to start coming up short pretty regularly, I would think, with the mantra that they're pounding down our throats about getting everybody out of their cars, and, you know, these taxes are not going to just magically appear. So it's going to be taken out of our one pocket or another eventually. And, you know, you've got Measure X that will go on for a few more years. Is that seven years total, right? Yeah, so you've, you're, I would suspect that this is just, just the beginning of losing road taxes. So they want you out of your car, unless they can start getting Peter to pay tax on his bicycle riding. It's probably coming anyway. I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Motion approved, 5-0. And with that, we will adjourn to 3:30 on Wednesday, November 18.